Next, we have a report of board members. Yes.
Board and Ray Council District attendees. I did attend a couple of events this past month. One of them was the TIC course meeting. And I attended the West Ridge.
Mike Bo.
Oh. The West Ridge Musical where the K through 3rd graders presented a performance that was totally exceptional. There was a lot of excitement in the room and the children were extremely excited to be there and their performance was phenomenal. I also attended an event in community where one of our own from Ray High received a scholarship from the Urban Financial Group. I was really caught off guard by seeing him, but it was totally amazing that he was one of the recipients. And the way they acknowledged his achievements in Raytown Schools was totally phenomenal. I believe he's in drama. His name is Jeremiah Washington. He's in drama. The list, the litany of things that that young man is involved in was totally impressive. And it was really nice to meet his parents and it was a great accolade to the Raytown School District. And just wanted you guys to know that. And that's what I have.
Good evening, everybody. This past month, I attended the Raytown Quality School Day here at this building. And we got a chance to fellowship and eat and have fun with the administrative team of Raytown. It was quite the day. And we had fun with the cheating members and playing Family Feud. And so we just, we love our superintendent. And I'm into that story. All right. I also got a chance to attend the West Ridge Elementary PE and Music Performance on the 18th. It is, as my sister said here, it was phenomenal. The leadership team on the group that was leading it and the kids were right on point, excited, and glad to be doing what they were doing. I attended the Ref Board of Trustees Meeting on the 19th and just was updated on a lot of good things we'll hear about later. I also participated in giving to shoes across America with the Raytown Rotary Group. And the group gives shoes to needy kids all over the world. And I was proud for me and my family to be a part of purchasing and giving shoes to that event. Also, I've adopted, me and my family have adopted a Raytown Elementary student for Christmas in cooperation with the Raytown South Student Council. Glad to be a part of that. And I'm gonna have the gifts by Friday. We're gonna go shopping tomorrow. That's my report.
All right, thank you.
James. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. And since our next board meeting is not till January, I hope everyone has, you know, happy holidays. I had a great month. I also went to the West Ridge Performance. Again, it's phenomenal. It was, I went to the evening session and I had to park way down the street. And I won't tell Dr. Carcara how many people were in the gym, but there might be a little issue there. But it was an amazing attendance, great performance. I really enjoyed it so much. Then on that Friday, they had entire Thanksgiving feast. Of all the elementary school kids got into the gym and got to either have turkey or chicken nuggets. I passed out a lot of juice, a lot of milk, and I shadow boxed with a couple of kids. And so that was, that was super fun. I really enjoyed that. I also got to go to our Raytown Academy's designation ceremony. That was a great time. Again, I love seeing, you know, our cheerleaders, our band kids, everybody giving a performance. Speaking of performances, I also went to the performance at Raytown High School. They were doing a play. And I just want to shout out to Ms. Colster, Ms. Katie Colster, for all the work that they do. Hattie Town was amazing. It was... Again, I've been going to Raytown High School performances since, you know, 20 years now. And that was the most intimate, amazing performance that I didn't know that a high school could put on. So again, I highly recommend everybody go to one of the high schools. Go one to, one of the middle schools, go to your local performance and watch the talent that our kids have. Because it is, it's phenomenal. Last thing that I did, I went to a transition night that we had at Raytown High School. Some of our kids with disabilities got to talk about their life after high school, which was amazing to know. Again, some of those kids, I was in the building when they were there. And to see them have an own apartment, to be able to, you know, go grocery shopping. It was amazing to see one kid talk about how he took his first vacation ever. And also to see how some of the parents are like, the weight that they've had to, you know, always trying to protect their kids and things like that and to feel that that has been lifted. And to be able to, you know, trust their child to be a fully capable adult. It was just amazing and inspiring to me. So shout out to Vivian at Raytown High School, Vivian McKinney. She is amazing. And if there's ever anybody that needs anything for, in their special needs for post-secondary, please reach out to her. And that is my report.
Mr. Newton.
Yes, I yield all of my events until next month. Thank you.
All right. Since the last meeting, I did get to go out to the construction site where we had the gas leak at Ray South High School. And, you know, we talk about it a lot, especially the inconvenience that it caused at the beginning of the year. But tell you what, when I went out on that site and walked it, I was happy to be leaving. Because it was a very hazardous, tenuous situation and those guys showed a lot of skill in doing it. I know that Josh has already got his accolades for it, but we've really done a really good job at that. And, you know, in keeping people safe in the community, at the school, the people that's actually working on the site. And from what Josh tells me, tomorrow they'll be laying asphalt. And so we're very thankful that we had all those people, all our, all the stakeholders involved that can really, you know, rectify that situation. So that's the end of the board member reports. Next, we'll have the reporter superintendent.
Thank you Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Newton, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board, and members of the Raytown Quality School District Community. Thank you for being here with us this evening. And it seemed just like yesterday I was saying happy Thanksgiving. And as we prepare to exit for the winter holiday, I just want to remind us that this is the season where we demonstrate how grateful we are for one another. And so my announcements this evening are truly just that. The gratefulness that I have as the leader of this amazing school district and the work that's taking place. Prior to us coming together this evening, we've had several events many of the board members have spoken about. The first one was our 9th grade commitment ceremonies that happened at our high schools, where all of our 9th graders signed a banner making a commitment to make sure that they are going to graduate. And I'll say it again, that they are going to graduate. And so it is just nice to see that they are focused and engaged in making sure that they are not only signing a document, but holding true to what they have promised. And I know that they will do it with 100% completion. We also had an opportunity to have our designated designation ceremony with Forward Next Generation Learning. And it really does me good when I read the comments of someone from the outside coming in to see the fruits of the labor that has taken place. And when you hear the remarks from individuals who have not walked our schools to talk about how engaged the children are, how engaged the lessons were, how amazing our schools are, I just smile from the outside to the inside and back again, just because I'm proud of our students. I'm proud of the work of our teachers and staff. And I'm proud of the leaders and the work that they are putting into these efforts. I want to take a moment just to thank all of the team here in Raytown. But even more so, Dr. Greiner, for taking the bull by the horns and pulling this work just to make sure we're looking at the way in which we educate our children in a different way. So I say to you, Dr. Greiner, thank you for your willingness and your ability to get this work moving. So just thank you. The other thing that I want to say is, many of you have said it already, but prior to the holiday, just all of the events and activities, whether it was the collaboration between Fizz Ed and Music at West Ridge, or whether it was going to Raytown High to see Hattie's Town. I will concur with you, Mr. Jamerson. As a musician, the intricacies and the difficulties and the level of the performance from our students was remarkable. So I just want to say thank you to Katie Colster and Alex Colster, the pit band, all who put their efforts in, the sounds, the sound crew, the lighting crew, everyone who put in the work to make sure that it was a mark of excellence. It was truly probably one of the best that I've seen. And I always say it can't get any better. It did. And so there's only, there's really nowhere else to go because it is beyond my expectations. The other thing that transpired this weekend, when we talk about community here in Raytown, we talk about our schools are only as great as the community in which we serve and vice versa. It was just nice to be a part of the mayor's Christmas tree lighting this past weekend as we came together as a community to make sure we are bringing in the season with joy and festivities. So thank you to Mayor McDonough for making sure that that event took place and that the fire department brought Santa in to bring joy to the faces of many of our children who were there to celebrate, to our Chamber Raytown Main Street, and to the Raytown Community Band, which is comprised of many of our teachers. Just thank you for giving your time and your dedication. And I want to close with this. This is not grateful, but it is grateful, but it is one that is of learning. I'm grateful for the staff and the way in which we responded last Monday to the weather-related incident. I will be the first one to tell you that the most difficult decision a superintendent has to make is what to do on a prediction of weather. Our staff with Mr. Husted and others are up at 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning, testing the roads, testing the temperatures, making sure the buses are ready. And there's nothing worse than when the predictions of the predicted are not predicted correctly. And so when we make decisions, the first thing that comes to mind is how we are going to get our children to and from school safely, if that is the direction we're going to take. We take into consideration the information we get from the National Weather Services. We get information from our facilities, whether they're prepared, the roadways. And last Monday, 4:00 in the morning, we were on the phone talking, myself and other superintendents as well as facilities. And nothing was happening until about 6:20. And at 6:20, we had one or two options. Leave children on the bus stop to understand that nobody's coming to pick them up because the buses were already out the gate. The planning began immediately of how we're going to get our children home safely and our staff home safely as well. So it is never an easy decision, but it is one that has to be made. And I am grateful for our transportation, our food services, our facilities, for making sure that we got our children home safely and our staff was able to get home safely as well. So again, kudos to everyone who comes together behind the scenes because no one sees what goes on behind the scenes. The only thing we see is the decision that was made. And so I'm grateful for our students as well for understanding. The number of emails I received from students that said, Dr. Martin Knox, I know you can't control the weather, but can you plow the streets? Well, I don't think I can, but we'll see what we can do. So collaborating with the city of Raytown and the city of Kansas City as well, just to make sure all the roadways are conducive to travel. So as we begin to wind down the superintendent's announcements, I just want to say to everyone, happy holidays. Happy holidays. Happy holidays to you. And so 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5 are all information items for our board. And the most important part of the superintendent's report is 8.6.
Good evening. My name is Genevieve Diallo. I'm the Student Council President at Raytown South.
I am Riley Rapp. I'm the Vice President of Raytown South.
And I'm Casey Hayes. I'm a representative of Raytown South.
Okay, so first, let's talk, I'm gonna talk about the assembly that we had last Friday and what we did for the assembly. So first, we had Hungry Hunger Hippo, which we played during the assembly and lots of kids really enjoyed. Brought a lot of spirit as we all wore our class shirts that we got from the school district as well. As well as during the assembly, we won against the basketball game. We did the assembly for the basketball game, which we did win against Barstow that Friday, which was really fun. But the main point was during the basketball game, we did a canned food drive, which is two cans for a ticket into the game. And we got a lot of canned goods from the game, which we're gonna be donating here soon.
And then two other things that are coming up this weekend, next week. So we have our debate tournament this Friday, the 12th, as well as the 13th on Saturday. I want to say thank you to Mr. Noddy Newton, who signed up to judge for us, and all other members of the community who did sign up to judge. We're expecting 31 schools to come attend. So there's gonna be hundreds of students that are gonna be at our school for the varsity tournament, which we haven't hosted in over seven years. So this will be a great opportunity to hopefully kind of grow our program and just demonstrate our dedication to public speaking and extracurriculars. And then on the week of the 19th and the 20th, the wrestling team is hosting their annual holiday tournament. And they are also looking for volunteers. And I think Casey can speak more to that.
Hello, hello. We're looking for more members, sorry, volunteers that will help track the scores of the wrestling tournaments. It's usually around six mats. But we have like more gyms, so it's gonna be way more than that. So we need way more people than that. We need, yeah, just if you're interested, please contact Cole Reeves or Angela Lee for that. Then for the Christmas party, we have a Christmas party on December 18th, next Thursday. Thank you to all the board members who have sponsored a kid. That's greatly appreciated. And thank you for all the board members that signed up. Just, I already said that. If you're still interested, please reach out to Maureen Thomas. For our music and arts and stuff, our Christmas band concert is on the 15th of December at 7:00 PM. And then our Christmas orchestra concert is tomorrow. So at the same time. But also our choirs had their Christmas turn, Christmas turn, well, what's that? Whoa, sorry, my bad. Christmas concert on that Thursday. And they also participated in the music, I think Kansas City Music at, I'm guessing, Ray Peck. For, yeah, holiday, Christmas holiday music, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Hello, I am Brendan, the Student Council Secretary.
And I'm Donovan, the Student Council Marketing Chair at Raytown High School.
All we have for you today is a few upcoming events that we have for these last couple of weeks before Christmas break. Next week, we have our annual Cookies and Cramming Event. We have helped in our library. We have hosted that for the past couple of years. It is an opportunity for our students to study on their week of finals and also get to enjoy some cookies.
And then we also have, coming up next Tuesday, we have our, this is something, I believe this is our first year doing, but we're having a scavenger hunt. We're gonna hide, I think it was 20 or like 30 tickets around the school. And students who find them, they'll be able to go to our sponsor and, you know, get a, get a reward for it, I guess. And, you know, just spread that, just spread that holiday cheer.
The last upcoming event we have is next week. We haven't decided the day yet, but we will be putting candy canes, as well as a nice note on every car that is parked in our school's parking lot in order to spread that holiday joy to hopefully any staff member or student who drives to school. That'll be all. Goodbye.
And this brings to a closure the report of the superintendent. Before, but before Mr. Burton, you go to the next item, I just want to personally thank the board for your presence in schools, not just your presence, but your engagement in our schools. Whether you are serving food, passing out juices, participating in lessons, I just want to thank you for being present. I know it means a lot to me and I know it means even more to our children just to see you engaged and involved. And I just want to say thank you. And that concludes the report of the superintendent.
Next, we have the ray of hope.
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Newton, Board of Education, and Dr. Martin Knox. This evening for Ray of Hope, we are recognizing our RQS Day winners for the Why I Love My School Contest. This is our second annual contest. And we want to give a big shout out and thank you to Ref for rewarding each of our recipients a $100 gift card. So thank you to Ref. So for our winners, in recognition of your creativity, school pride, and inspiring contribution to the Why I Love My School Contest for RQS Day, your heartfelt entries reflects the spirit of RQS and celebrates the people, places, and experiences that make your school a special community. Through your words and perspective, you have helped amplify the positive stories that define our district. Thank you for sharing your voice and helping highlight what makes RQS a place where students feel supported, connected, and proud to belong. And here's a video with more about our contest winners.
I've always liked art. I've always liked creating things, especially like now that I'm in like drawing and painting too. I've been working on art way more often than I have been. I guess it just like makes me feel good to like have like a finished product that I enjoy.
I'm really surprised, like I'm excited that I won.
It was definitely shocking. I wasn't expecting to win again.
I was really excited and a little bit scared.
Excited and happy. I was really, really happy.
I was a little shocked at first and then I got surprised and like excitement, in that order.
Really happy and I like that, you know, everybody who inspired it were here to celebrate me.
My teacher said that it was for like a hundred dollar bill and that's when I got really excited. So I just started going at it and then I started like thinking about all the good times and like what they do for the school.
I just kind of wanted to make an art piece that like celebrates our school. And I already did a video last year, so I didn't want to do a video again. And I just thought art was easier than writing like an essay about why I love the school.
I felt like just writing something would be way easier than trying to make a video and make it look good or draw something.
I did videos in my history class last year. I really enjoyed like editing them and making them. That's why I did a video. I think I could probably go into like making videos. I really like doing artistic stuff. So something along that field would be something I'd be interested in.
I'm not like entirely sure yet, but probably like journalism.
My favorite subject is probably geography. I think I'm gonna be, oh yeah, an archaeologist. I want to discover like meteors and stuff like that and dinosaur bones.
My school is a great place and it's my first year at this school. Being a 4th grader is kind of hard and really fun because being a 4th grader, you get to do a bunch of fun things, like a bunch of experiments in science and get to learn more hard things in math.
We have a really good principal and she organizes really fun things for us.
The rallies, the dodgeball tournaments.
It definitely makes me proud of my school that we just like keep on like continuing like this tradition of like this contest who celebrates like the people who like truly care about like our school.
I think it was a really good opportunity to express my feelings on how I feel about the school and to let people know that, hey, we're out here too.
My school is just a really great place and I love it so much. It's been the best five years of my life.
Most important message was when I said the teachers because that really means a lot to me. This year, they were really nice to me and that's probably the most important thing.
We just have like really good teachers.
The teachers, even if they're not having that good of a day, they still have a smile on their face. And if a teacher sees the kids that doesn't have a smile on their face, they make that kid have a smile on their face.
I want to shout out Ms. Bruner and Ms. Gary. They're really nice to me.
I had Ms. Megan in preschool and I really liked her when I was in preschool. And she inspired me to come here and do my A-plus hours here.
Well, my mom at home, she definitely is like my number one supporter in like everything I do. At school, it's probably Ms. Hazel. She like is what got me like into this contest originally.
Ms. Holloway, she was my teacher throughout middle school and she helped me with a lot of things. She's a really good teacher.
I think people like often give Raytown Schools a bad rep. And I think they're just like focusing on like all the bad. But I feel like there's so much good to be found in this school.
Some people don't like to go to school, but to inspire people to like going to school to make it even funner.
We have most of our winners here today. So when I call your name, please come up. Dominic Edwards, Casey O'Neil, Kinsley Atwell, Harper McKinley, Heidi Hetzel, and Kelsey Beely.
Next on the agenda is our public comment period. And we have no one signed up. We have no one signed up to make public comment, so we'll move to the next item.
Well, it's a good thing they all left because didn't want to disappoint that one girl to say the five years of elementary is the best. All downhill after that.
Man.
Dude, just have a, just a little bit of finance committee. Because you mentioned the South project. I'm glad that it is wrapping up, but the project was not cheap. It's about $3 million worth of not cheap. But our hopes are that we are going to get a favorable report from insurance that's going to hopefully pay a big portion of that cost. They need to pay a big portion of the cost.
The cost.
Because we're not gonna accept no for an answer. So, yeah, $3 million. So we've, we have the money on hand to pay that for now, but we need to recover that money so it can be spent on more better things like classrooms and school stuff. So appreciate Josh and everybody on that project. So no other report. We're gonna... We're going to have odd reports in a few minutes. Uh, and that's all from finance committee.
Uh, policy committee? Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, let's do the motion first. Motion made and seconded. There's no report from, uh, policy committee, none from capital improvements, community engagement.
I guess this should be the place to talk about the.
Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty. The Community Engagement Committee met back in October and we talked about sponsoring or supporting a school board walk of excellence. And that's where we as a board would support the school districts, teachers, and students by raising money for, on an annual walk. The walk would be a 5K, a 5K walk that would, uh, encompass businesses to be sponsors as well in the, in the walk. The city, of course, with the, um, law enforcement board. Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting about this.
My guy, sorry about that. The whole, the whole idea of the board walk of excellence is to give support to students and teachers to incentivize, uh, them for work well done. So that would be either academic, uh, attendance, uh, anything that the teacher or the administrators deem rewardable, that we as a board will raise funds to support that. And the, um, school board walk of excellence would be a 5K walk or run for all you athletic people on the board and, and about. That it would, that we would do a 5K walk, do, map it out and just do it annually, every year. So that every year the board is active in supporting students and teachers to incentivize them. And we would involve Ref because I understand that Ref has done it in the past and it would be a collaboration between the two of us so that we'd work together to ensure that this annual thing occurs. And every year our students and our teachers know that our board is out there walking for excellence for them.
Man, that's an excellent idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, man.
Mr. President, I think, uh, Ms. Edna even talked about, cause I know Dr. Douglas, we talked about virtual as well.
Yes.
It's pretty virtually. So that was one of the things she had.
Yes.
Virtually.
They could do it virtually as well. They didn't, wouldn't have to physically walk. They could, in their minds. Walk to, that's why I walk right to.
I do that all the time.
They are walking that 5K in their mind, but they're still supporting. And I got this idea because I was at one of the walkthroughs at one of the high schools and I did a one-on-one talk with the teachers. I said, well, what do you guys want? I mean, what would be helpful for you? And the feedback from them kind of sparked the idea of, we could support them in that, in that regard. We could support them by being visible in community and it would tie us to the businesses around as well. It would give us that visibility with businesses to help them, get the businesses to tie into.
What month do they, do they usually have that?
You know, I honestly don't know. I think it's April.
It used to be October when Ref did it.
In the fall?
Oh, fall is a great time for a walk. And it gives us time to plan it as well as a, as a board. It gives us plenty of time to get buy-in from community and all that.
So I also spoke with Mr. Dean, who was at the table, Michael Dean, too. So I was telling him.
So we can train?
So you absolutely, cause for 5K, you're gonna get five steps. So I definitely could give this to them.
Mr. President, um, so like the structure of the 5K would be, um, people would pay, you know, to be able to participate in it. Uh, we will also get sponsorship from local businesses to, um, you know, to be able to showcase for advertisement, things like that. And then also, you know, there's food trucks. Do you think that we could, like grocery, for example, uh, create a food truck that's right down the street, um, to provide food for people at, in the 5K? Is that like a plan of like how we are, you know, raising funds for the teachers?
Yes, absolutely. I put together actually a little package here you guys. If you can kind of look through. It's not set in stone, but it's kind of a borderline template of things that can occur. And I think we have room, we have enough room around the weekend. Since it's in the planning phases. You know, sky's the limit. It's an open road that. And it's up to our creativity in terms of how we execute and, uh, train the teachers. Absolutely not. No, it's not just that. We incorporate everybody's engagement from students, teachers, business people.
Mr. President, um, question, uh, just, you know, how we could also get more communication and smarten these right here, uh, where we allow students to, um, market this. We allow students to, um, be able to, you know, maybe partner with Raytown Raytown Sub School, the councils and have them also be able to, you know, promote and market this, um, for, you know, their families and also those students as well to be able to.
Absolutely. The whole idea is to get everybody engaged, meaning community engagement, not just the teachers and students, the board, the business communities, all of us. So that all of us collectively say, Raytown is the place to be and we want to be a part of. And we want to support our school system. Because when you get the community involved, when you get the community engaged in the school system, the school system inevitably, inevitably will improve because they have a vested interest. Especially since we started the ninth, the ninth grade academy where we're focusing on career pathways. What better way to get the, the businesses around us to tap in to that academy even? So there's a lot of ways that getting the community involved, starting out with the simple walk that can end up with a major run, home run, that is.
Oh.
Mr. President, so with the, with, I know we have Ref coming up next, but with this, our educational foundation of any district usually is the one who will put something on like this. So is that a conversation that we are prepared to have with their new leadership?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I, yeah, we don't see a lot of this. I mean, I want to see more of this, you know, coming from our, our educational foundation, more integrated into the district versus being a separate entity. So I would like to definitely see more of that come up in this new year.
Absolutely. I've already kind of reached out to Ms. Holly, uh, to let her know that I would like to be meeting with her after meeting with us, uh, to further discuss or show her the plan and getting them engaged as well. So that there's a lighter lift on our side because there's already a, uh, a plan in place that they've done it in the past. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We're just trying to add another spoke.
Yeah, I think, uh, as, um, we can get, I think, probably as a consensus, we can agree that this is something we want to, uh, get involved, do it. Um, and as, uh, we need to maybe set a timeframe or maybe next meeting or meeting after that to have where we can actually make a motion to actually do it. Once, uh, some of the things. One of my initial questions would be, uh, the funds and where are they going? And where do they, where do they go to? And so is it to Ref and then Ref does what they do or stuff like that? I mean, I may not have that answer right now, but I think that would be, uh, like our next steps to, as you guys develop in more detail with Ref and how we do it, then that'd be, may I present some motion for an agenda that we, uh, as a board, we can vote on. And you guys on the committee will already, have already approved it. That way we know that, you know, you've already done the, the.
Due diligence. Yes. And we did bring that up too in the meeting, talking about how the funds would be disseminated and Ref was the avenue to use. And we would reach out to our finance department, Ms. Jackie, and figure out if it should go somewhere or if Ref should just direct all those funds. That should probably be, our dissemination avenue would be Ref.
Thank you.
We'll figure it out. We'll get it figured out. We'll talk to whoever we need to talk to and we'll get it figured out.
Thank you. That's great.
You're welcome.
All right. Curriculum, professional development?
I think we need a meeting in January, January, January.
Citizens, citizens advisory?
Citizens advisory. Oh, you're gonna do good.
Now Josh is doing such a tremendous job. I want to jump on the Josh train. I'm sorry. Mr. You said, Trey, we didn't really have anything going on because Josh has been doing such a tremendous job. And I want to tell you guys about our next meeting. It'd be after, it'd be effective.
Josh about to get the big head.
No, Josh should, that shit, cause we've been doing such a tremendous job. That's why I'm meeting this camp.
No, I mean, literally.
I mean, he should, I wanted to buy it. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to go too dark for Martin Knox, but I did.
I don't know why, but I was gonna come back to that.
Okay, yeah, but yeah, I wanted to make sure I gave Josh his accolades because we didn't have nothing to do with Josh. I actually got to talk to Josh on the sun. I wanted to say, hey, when I get to talk to Josh before Boobah, then it's a plus because we don't have nothing to do because he been doing great, you know, walking your reminds.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, thank you, Josh.
All right. Well, with that.
Yeah, no. So I, I, my brain went to cancellation last week, so there was no report. So I apologize for safety. Um, citizens advisory, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. We provided an update regarding our strategic plan, but we also put, uh, concepts and ideas out there for our community to bring back to the table of information that they want to see, uh, being presented, but also information as it relates to research and how we can be as effective as we possibly can be, uh, with, um, citizens advisory. Um, so we will have our next meeting. Um, I don't think we've scheduled it yet, but we will. But that's the report of citizens advisory. And while I'm on citizens advisory, I didn't address this early, but please note that I was finding creative ways to win the game. It's not all cheating. No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
That's why I didn't give a board report. That's why I typed with my reports till January, cause we did have a nice solid game going, but somebody got eliminated.
We have to review the tape.
Thank you.
All right. Let's vote. Next we have the Raytown Educational Foundation report.
The Raytown Educational Foundation, November 2025, highlights program and partnership updates. Share the Love Community Breakfast. Planning is underway and preparations have begun for 2026. Share the Love Community Breakfast, um, for 2026, 26, Share the Love Community Breakfast. This month, Ref met with district leaders, performing groups, community partners, and vendors to begin shaping the program, theme, and event logistics. Registration is open in January. Dual credit collaboration. Ref held meetings with counseling departments to review process for dual credit programs. Counselors shared insight about participation and Ref is beginning early planning in 2026, 27 rollout to ensure students are aware of opportunities. Data on current student participant is being gathered for communication and support processes. Graduating, graduating senior scholarship program, 25, 26 season launch. Ref is updating the scholarship application materials, including clearer instructions, improved checklist, and a new verification step to reduce incomplete submissions. Scholarship package will be delivered to counseling centers in January. Community and donor engagement, professional development scholarship presentation. Rep surprised Ashley Bacon, the 2025 recipient of the Amy Tittle Professional Development Scholarship during a school visit. The award presentation was coordinated in, in partnership with building leadership and the donor was notified of the recipient's heartfelt response. RQS Day Student Contest. Holly Van Deering Dark served as a judge for the district's RQS Day contest and presented awards and gift cards to the elementary and secondary winners across all three submit, submission categories, which were essay, video, and multimedia. Strengthening, strengthening district partnerships. Initial meetings were held with several district leaders to ensure open lines of communication as Ref transitions to new leadership. These meetings are helping shape the foundation's priorities for 2026. Foundation's operational transition. Executive Director onboarding and transition work continued throughout November as Ref experienced an executive director leadership change. Meetings with staff, trustees, and school leaders have supported long-range planning for 2026 and strengthened alliances with different district priorities. And lastly, we had our annual audit completed. The foundation's annual independent audit was completed in November with no significant findings. And that concludes my report.
Right. Thank you. That concludes the, uh, board committee reports. Is there a motion? Or policy? Board governor? There a second? Motion made and seconded? Motion passed. Motion made and seconded? Jackie?
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Newton, board members, Dr. Martin Knox. I'm Jackie Vernon. I'm the Executive Director of Business Operations. We have had our audit for the year, for the 24, 25 school year. And at this time, I would like to introduce Sandra Barrera with KPM CPAs and advisors to go over our audit report. And I would also just like to mention, and Sandra, you will probably be mentioning this also, but due to the federal shutdown and OMB, um, was not released with the federal compliance supplement was not released. So our federal supplement will not be completed until January. We will bring that to the board for approval in January, but we are required by state statute to have the rest of our audit, um, posted and approved by the board in December. So. Hi Sandra.
Hi, how is everyone?
Hello.
Wonderful. I'm guessing you can hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. Well, let me, um, let me share my screen. I hear that, uh, the hard copy reports did not get to you. So they were sent on Thursday overnighted. They were supposed to be there Friday. We got a notification from UPS that due to weather somewhere, um, that they were delayed and that they'd be delivered Monday. And apparently you guys. that they were delayed and that they'd be delivered Monday and apparently you guys still haven't got them. So I apologize for that and I'll tomorrow try to figure out where they are. So let's see. I am going to share this screen. Jackie, can you see my screen?
I do not see your screen.
Okay.
They do have an electronic version, the, the version you sent me.
Okay.
But that is all there.
Okay. All right, because it is letting me share it and I picked my screen, so, but that's okay. I'll I'll, I'll march, march ahead here. So my name is Sandra Barrera. As Jackie mentioned, I am an audit manager with KPM. And I'm going to present the audit for the district's year end, June thirty, twenty twenty five. Sorry, I'm having an issue with the Zoom screen getting out of my way here. So I'm going to start on page three. I have a PowerPoint here that I'm kind of following, but since you guys can't see it. It's gonna be a little, little different. So on page three of your electronic copy is our independent auditor's report. And this is where we, we've added our pension, our opinion on the financial statements. First off, like Jackie said, our audit is comprised of three different audits or examinations. The first one is on the financial statements. The second one is the schedule of selected statistics and that's DESI state portion requirement. Then the third portion is a federal audit. Typically, the OMB issues the compliance supplement prior to June. They did not get it out this year, prior to the government shutdown on October first. They finally released it on November twenty fifth. Prior to this, DESI released a memo stating that they would extend the deadline for that federal portion until January thirty first. So what that entails for us, we need to go through the compliance supplement. We need to make sure that the federal programs that we tested at Raytown that we actually did do all the testing, that there isn't anything new, that the compliance requirements supplement is requiring us to test. Once we do that, we'll, we'll compile everything. We will issue a separate report. It'll be called the single audit reporting package and that will include the schedule of expenditures of federal awards along with our opinion on that and our letter over those compliance requirements. And we will have that to you in January so that the board can approve it prior to that January thirty first deadline. So on page three, this is our opinion over the financial statements. Our second paragraph states that in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. This is the best opinion that you can get. An unmodified opinion. For those that are kind of new to this audit process, this independent auditor's report also has an area down on, on that first page, on page three, that is the responsibilities of management over the financial statements. And then on that second page of the report, it also details out our responsibilities as an auditor of those financial statements. Then we'll jump into page four. Actually, this is on page ten of your electronic copy. So this is the balance sheet. And this shows the cash and investments of the district, which is at sixty six point two million in total across all of the four funds. And then down at the bottom, it shows the restrictions of those assets and fund balances. So as you can see, out of those sixty six million, there's, there's a piece that's restricted for debt service, student activities. There's about almost three million remaining in bond proceeds that were not spent as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And then there's forty five point nine million that is unassigned. So that is operating funds of the district. Did somebody have a question?
No.
No, okay. So I just kind of wanted to point out that the district's fund balance this year is at thirty six point two four percent. Last year it was at thirty nine point seven five percent. And then in twenty twenty three, it was twenty four point nine two percent. So you guys have a healthy fund balance at thirty seven percent. It is coming down from that forty percent. There's a lot of different organizations out there that have varying fund balance percentage recommendations. We're a little bit conservative. We always recommend at least three months of operating fund reserve. And you guys have a little over four months. You have about four point three months. So so you have a healthy reserve. And that's good. You guys have been very conservative in your spending over the last couple of years. What we have actually seen this year is a lot of school districts kind of got used to all the ARPA money coming in and they've spent it. They, I, I kind of think they started relying on it. And we have seen several, several school districts falling to ten percent, even three percent, even one percent fund balance and kind of on the verge of being stressed. So, so it's good to see that you guys still have that fund balance over twenty five percent. On the next page, on page eleven of your electronic copy, this is your schedule, your statement of receipts and dispersments. And I just kind of highlighted a couple of the big ones. As you can see, the district had hundred and forty seven point seven million in overall receipts. The biggest change in that was your federal. Your federal receipts decreased by about five point two million. The prior year but the prior year actually had eight million of Esser funds from twenty twenty three spending. So even though it looks like it's five million less, when you discount that Esser from the prior year, that the federal actually increased by about two point eight million. The other thing is if you notice on the local receipts, local receipts were about eighty six point five million. Last year's local receipts were about eighty six point seven million. So the variance is very, very minimal, a very slight decrease. What's interesting is last year, your property taxes increased twenty three percent from the prior year. And with the Jackson County property tax issue that, that is ongoing, this lack of an increase is to be expected. And we're going to keep an eye on that. I talked to Jackie about that probably a couple of times a year and kind of see what's going on with that issue. On this page, on page eleven, this is a very condensed view of the receipts and dispersments. If you, if you go to page twenty five, there is a, a much more detailed schedule of receipts by, by source. So you can kind of see how much investments earnings are, property taxes, et cetera. So we go down to the dispersments, the total dispersments were almost a hundred and sixty nine million. This was an increase of seven million or only four percent, which is considered pretty flat. So there was a total net loss of twenty one point two million, which sounds like a lot. However, you know, at the end of last year, you had over twenty five million in unspent bond proceeds. So of that twenty one point two million dollar net loss, the expenditures on those facilities acquisition and construction was twenty three point five million. My slides are messed up here. Okay, I am not going to go through the notes to the financial statements. I highly recommend that you do look at them and do read them. I did want to just point out a couple of things here on my presentation that you can't see. I, I was just going to point out, you know, the general obligation bond payment schedule. So it looks like, you know, next year it's about twelve point seven million expected to be paid out for bonds. And then there's also some other long-term obligations such as fleet vehicles, buses, classroom spaces. Software subscriptions and those, those are about three hundred fifty three thousand due in the next year. Does anybody have any questions to this point? No, okay. It's a very high, high level overview here. On page thirty nine of your electronic copy, this is actually our independent accountant's report over the state or selected statistics examination piece of the audit. And this is a requirement of DESI. And this is where we, we report on the items that we tested, such as the calendar attendance, membership, free and reduced lunch counts, transportation, and then other state regulated financial requirements. And those statistics begin on page forty, if you're interested in looking at the numbers and the amounts that we've reported on. And those are the, the two pieces that are in your reporting package this month are just those financial statements and this the schedule of selected statistics. And then I don't know if you have the letters in your electronic copy. You will be receiving hard copies, but we do have a couple of management and board recommendations. We have the three general recommendations. The first one is a new standard that the GASB or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has issued. It's Statement one oh three, which is a financial reporting model improvements. And this is going to have some minor but noticeable changes to next year's audit, how it looks. We prepare your financial statements, so there's not a lot of action on the part of the district, but just to be aware that, that some things will look a little bit different and the layout will be a little bit different. Our second general recommendation is a cybersecurity program. So this is just a general recommendation to remind the board and management that cybersecurity issues are always arising and that acknowledging this and ensuring that the district has continual monitoring of current situations and a strong sense of internal controls, a sense that they are needed. It's the first line of defense. So every year there are local school districts who get defrauded. So, so we just put this in here as, as a reminder. The third general recommendation is in reference to stipends and extra duty pay. So DESI specifies that districts must develop written policies. Written documentation before any extra compensation is paid. The written documentation should include details about the work that's to be performed, the period of performance and the amount or rate to be paid for the extra duty. The agreement must be signed by both the employee and a district representative and it should receive formal approval by the board. Also be sure that if stipends or extra duty pay are funded with federal dollars, DESI requires that employees complete time and effort documentation to demonstrate that the additional work performed is separate from the regular contracted duties. So we recommend that the district continually review its policies and procedures to ensure that all stipends and extra duty payments are formally approved by the board prior to payment. Again, this is just a general recommendation. It is not because we found something at Raytown. We've actually had a couple of school districts who have I wouldn't say been tricked, but you know, employees you know, state that they should be getting a stipend or whatever for something that they do that is part of their job and these stipends are being improved at a managerial level. And management isn't having the board approve these. So we have seen that a couple of times this year. And then the, the fourth recommendation is about the district's new student information system. So the district transitioned to a new student information system this year. The district personnel spent many hours and months making manual hour, making manual entries to the DESI upload file in order for accurate reporting to DESI. So the, the initial file that we received was hundreds of thousands of, of adia, of, of hours short. Right? I know Matt, Matt and his team spent countless hours. Prior to us, they spent countless hours with the new software provider, getting them to fix things and make things right, but they have spent countless hours manually looking at individual student attendance and getting it more correct. So at this time, the district's historical records for twenty twenty five are kind of a combination of manual records and the, the new systems, the SIS system records. So we, we recommend that the district monitor the calendar hours, the hours of session and the attendance records on a regular basis throughout the year. Beginning on the first day of school. I know we're halfway through the year, but it's never too late to start this. Just to make sure the accurate information is within the SIS. You know, and the base layer to the attendance hours is the calendar. The calendar in the system must agree with the calendar that was reported to DESI. And then after that, there needs to be a comparison of the total available hours, which is absent plus attended. Make sure that those total possible hours match the calendar in the DESI system. If a problem persists that's outside of the information being entered by the district, the district really needs to notify the software vendor immediately and promptly. The software vendor is unable to assist with the software solution. We recommend that the district reassess the student information system and maybe consider alternative solutions that will meet the district's needs. And that is all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I was just gonna say, I don't think we have any questions at this time.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay. Well, I would like to thank Jackie and her team. They are phenomenal to work with. Everybody at the district has been very courteous to us during our audit process and we very much appreciate that. So thank you and thank you for allowing me to present this to, to you tonight. I, I love what I do and I love my job, but gosh, I, I sure seem boring after the first, you know, everybody who's went before me. So apologize for not being apologize for not being more exciting.
This is pretty exciting.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Sandra.
All right. Thank you, Jackie.
I just, uh, wanna say, you know, we, uh, seem like, well, we always tasked to do more with less. And just seeing, looking at like the fund balance and the percentage and thinking about all the things that, like for instance, the project we had to do, uh, all the way to, um, the salaries and all those things that we have uh, spent or in that savings in ways that, man, I couldn't imagine that. I just remember the days where we're like 20%, 20%, we gotta make sure we got 20%. And now it's like 39, that's, that's, uh, that's, that's pretty incredible. So I'll give you the credit. Yeah, let's do that. All right. Is there a motion? Did we make that motion already? Yeah. Let's vote. You got it. You got it. All right. Motion passes. Onto new business. Is there a motion for Missouri United School Insurance Council renewal?
Mr. President, I move that to the SAP, the 2026 Insurance Premium, Missouri United Schools Insurance Council in the amount of 3,297,233.
We already paid that. We're here on that project. Motion made and seconded. Let's go. We'll get it back, Rick.
That's not even the three man I'm talking.
Yeah, but it's the insurance, right?
So 13% increase, will we go talk about that or?
I'm happy to come talk about that.
Or is there anything, is this just a normal increase?
I think it's, um,
Yeah, I guess we talk about that.
The largest, um, portion of that is an increase to workers' comp. Our mod went up quite a bit. So that section went up almost 200,000 for workers' comp. The rest of it is, there was a 4% overall renewal. So that was just the, the normal music renewal. Um, we have an increase in buildings because of, um, the, the new gyms and the new pack. So that was an increase of 126, almost 127,000. So that's, that's normal based on that. And, and so those were the three things, the increase with buildings, the workers' comp, and then about 48,000, 49,000 in just the normal rate increase.
A lot of more work performance comp claims than usual this year?
We, we did. We had quite a, quite a bit more. Our mod rate for the renewal went from 1.54 mod in 2025 to this renewal ending at the 1.81. So it went up quite a bit.
Let's, uh, unless anybody wants to change their vote, we'll probably move on. Thank you. Motion passes. RUBA Wireless Management Renewal. Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the RUBA network and licenses for renewal by 130,365,57.
Motion made and seconded. Any question? Let's vote. Next we have, um, first read of new policies. Just for the information.
Mr. President, move that the board approve the December 8th, 2025, concerned agenda as presented.
Motion made and seconded. I have some donations to read. We have a donation of a Toyota RAV4 worth $13,500 from Ken Cooper to Hernan Career Center's Auto Collision Program. We have a donation of $125 from Lauren Demont at Gap Inc. to Fleet Ridge Elementary for school's PE field day. We have a donation of $500 from, uh, John Lederuser to Raytown High School Soccer. We have a donation of $400 from Michael Adamo at Strawberry Studios to Raytown School District's Christmas luncheon for elementary principals. Donation of donuts worth $143.05 for Donuts with Grown Ups event at Northwood School from Lamar's Donuts. Donation of gift cards, gift baskets, food and dessert worth $600 from Sisters in Christ to Raytown Success Academy. And donation of gloves worth $15 from Christina Brooks to Robinson Elementary. Once again, we thank you and greatly appreciate all the donations from all our stakeholders and those that are, uh, have a shared interest in the success of our school district, especially our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got it, no? We're just waiting on you, man. It's your world.
It's your world.
It's your world, man. We're just here, man. We don't want no problems. All right. Ayes. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that the board adjourn the regular board, venue case of meeting at 7:57 PM.
There are motion made and seconded and 30.
My second.
Meeting is adjourned.